All right, I believe it's officially 7:00 PM. So, welcome to the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start off with two proclamations tonight. Fire Prevention Week and National Physicians Assistant Week. So, we'll start with Fire Prevention Week, and I think we have some representatives here in the fire department. Okay, just step up here. City Clerk, could you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas the city of Manhattan, Kansas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Manhattan. Public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires killed 2,770 people, and fire departments responded to 339,500 home fires in the United States in 2019. The majority of U.S. fire deaths occur at home each year. Manhattan residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond, and will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. The 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety," effectively serves to remind us that we need to make, take personal steps to increase our fire safety from fire. Now therefore, Wynd Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city and urge all the people of Manhattan to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many activities and efforts of the Manhattan Fire Department.
Okay, I'm going to present you with the proclamation. Want to say a few words?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Butler and Commissioners, for your continued support of the Manhattan Fire Department and all that we do to keep citizens and visitors safe here in our great city of Manhattan. Want to invite anybody that's around on Sunday, come see us at our open house at Kimball and Dennison. It's 11 to 2, sorry, 11 to 3. There'll be all kinds of activities for all ages, and we'll do a live burn demonstration to see the effects of a fire in a house. Hope to see you all there.
Then we have National Physician Assistant Week. I think we have two representatives here to pick up this proclamation.
I'll take a picture.
Well, you're going to take pictures. Okay, that's fine. Got to get it on there, okay? So, Brenda, can you read this one?
Whereas quality, cost-effective, accessible, patient-centered health care provided by physician assistants contributes to the well-being and quality of life for all patients of Manhattan, Kansas. PAs are academically and clinically prepared medical professionals who diagnose illness, develop and manage treatment plans, and often serve as the, as a patient's principal health care provider. PAs are often the first point of contact for many patients and play a vital role in helping them understand their medical needs and empower them to become effective advocates for their own health. A valuable asset to the medical team, PAs enhance the delivery of high-quality health care for patients, often in medically underserved enroll areas. PAs have earned the respect of the general public for their dedication and contributions to people's lives, and for their commitment to team-based care and ensure delivery of effective and efficient health care services. Now therefore, Wynd Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby proclaim October 6th to 12th, 2021, as National Physician Assistant Week. Throughout Manhattan, Kansas, encourage all residents to recognize PAs for the significant impact they have made and continue to make in health care as a critical part of the health care team.
I'm sure this is an important one, especially this year and last year. Say a few words.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and it's a privilege to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the PA program and PAs that we will train in the future, and the PAs who work here in the city and in this community. We thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate this.
All right, as this is the first meeting of the month, we have open public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we didn't have anybody sign up in advance, so seeing none, we'll, we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ready?
Yes, thank you. I did want to say Dennis, Director Butler from RCPD has decided to retire officially, I suppose, in February, and I just wanted to commend him on his stellar leadership for the Riley County Police Department. I was part of the search committee when we were selecting the next director for RCPD, and there were quite a few applicants, and certainly, he didn't have to take this job. He was close to retirement even at that time, but he, he believed in Manhattan and the community that we have here, and the police department that we have here, and we were very excited when he decided to accept the position. So, I value what he brought to our community and the positions that he's put in place for sexual assault, as well as moving forward with the co-responder program and many other initiatives. He was very collaborative and easy to work with, and also part of the fair and impartial policing and working with the Coalition for Justice. So, I think he's left a, a big footprint in the short time that he's been with us. So, I wish him all the best, and I'm sure Law Board will start doing a search soon enough. I want to, the League of Women Voters has a candidate forum this Sunday, October 10th, in the afternoon, and it's via Zoom, and I believe it's going to be broadcast on Facebook. It's usually in person, but this year, it is not in person, so I just wanted to make everybody aware, as you all make decisions for the elections, that there are about three or four forums, and I believe three of them are on Zoom. So, the first one is this October 10th, for, for your information. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I was just going to briefly update the public or whoever's listening about some of the newest Manhattan residents, in that we began receiving our first family of Afghan allies, and I think as one, one request I have of the community is, as we talk about the people that maybe are arriving over the next few months from Afghanistan that we think about them, sometimes we hear refugees or evacuees, or we're not sure how to refer to this group of people, and one word that I hope that we can use is allies, and that they are Afghan allies, and currently, the Department of Homeland Security is carrying out the Operation Welcome Allies, which ends what you, with what you saw on Friday, maybe, as people arrived into the Kansas City Airport after going through a lengthy vetting process that lasted over six weeks. And you can trace that family back to that ally, the father had fought alongside the United States forces, had secured the Kabul Airport while the United States evacuated, and as he secured that airport, his family came to the airport, and the baby was born at the airport, and has been traveling since, well, the baby was born six days after the fall of the government at the airport, and has been traveling until this past Friday to reach Manhattan. And that's a pretty cool story out of a tragedy, and I think as we think about how we welcome the people into our community, there's, there's at least 10 more arriving in the next week or so, and I think we'll have some waves of more through the, the fall and winter. But just remember that we're, we're thinking of them as allies. So many people in the community at Fort Riley, and our veterans in our community have served along these different people and wouldn't have an opportunity to be here in the way that they are had, had those people not risked their lives and put those ideals forward to, to serve alongside us. So, just help me welcome them and refer to them as allies.
Mayor, I just would like to point out, we got our, our sales tax receipts for the month of September the other day, and it shows the fifth month in a row where we've collected over a million dollars in sales taxes, which is the first time in, in a few years that we've had that kind of collections, which puts us currently about $600,000 over budget for sales tax collections for the year, and on pace to be at or above the 2019 sales tax number. So, generally, the economy around town has been improving, and we sure like to see that, and hopefully, we can continue that, and which will help take some pressure off of property taxes going forward in the future, hopefully. Thanks.
I'd like to point out that October the 12th is the deadline to register to vote, and that October 13th is the first day you can advance vote at the county clerk's office. And if you need or want more information, just call the county clerk's office, because they are the source. You could check their website, too. The, we're, the community, and you've probably heard it on the radio, but the, is, is having a veterans parade, and I'm not sure of the date, but I know that you can call Janet Nichols, the Military Relations Officer at the Chamber of Commerce Office here in Manhattan, and she can give you all the details. If you want to have an entry in the parade, do it now, early enough, and, but anyway, mark your calendars and plan to go. It's always the biggest, they bill it as the biggest veterans parade in Kansas. So, it's, it's a worthy, and Fort Riley comes, and it's a, a big event. I, one of the city staff members, Jared Wassinger, announced earlier that the strategic, the draft of the strategic plan is now on the city website, and they, prioritization survey is also there, and there will be a public open house this coming Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in the City Commission Room. This is important for us all to pay attention to as we go through all of the steps to determine what should be the city's priorities, and this is a kind of a high level, but it's going to matter in the future. So, what, what is it our community needs and what should be the top 10 or top 15 that we put our energies and our money into? So, we invite you to be a part of that. Thank you.
Okay, as Commissioner had us all pointed out, I'm, I'm also impressed with our sales tax receipts, you know, five months going up is good over 2019. Statistically, if we get two more, we can actually say it's a trend, and we reversed, you know, the negative things there, and I, and I think we're going to get there because we've got some great events for the holidays planned. The Chamber's pushing some things. You'll see a poster coming out with a series of events, and I want to make this the holiday destination. Everybody needs to come Manhattan and spend their money, so we can get that sales tax trend. So, appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which previously have been reviewed by the City Commission. The Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
I will, I will make a motion and I will make a comment. I am, I move that we approve.
You do public comments first.
Oh, well, okay. Well, I do have a comment. I would like to just call attention to the Flint Hills Discovery Center Kidscape Project, Phase 2, that will be voting tonight, hopefully, to approve, and we will be approving $1,237, $1,237,630 for the final design and construction of that project. And this is funding that the Flint Hills Discovery Foundation has done fundraising for, and it's just, it's kind of like the zoo with the Asian exhibit. Private funding has supported those two projects, and it's just a wonderful thing to have people come together. In the case of the Flint Hills Discovery Center, a lot of it is the ranching community here in the Flint Hills, and they serve on the board, and they're passionate about the Flint Hills and what a special place it is here. So, I just wanted to call attention to that.
Seeing no other Commissioner comments, is there any public comment on the consent agenda items? To include, I think we've got Bruce Sneed with us on Zoom, so if you wish to make a comment, feel free. Okay, I don't, don't hear anything there, so seeing no, no public comment on the consent agenda, we can take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as distributed.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattisal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider amending the 2021 city budget, and Rena, the Director of Finance, is going to take it from there.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Let me bring up the, okay, thank you very much. Uh, no, doesn't like that.
Try that again. Doesn't. Go to slide 2 right here, see what happens there. All right, click open. Okay, click right there. I don't know why that wasn't working.
That won't either.
All right, I'll try it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. On September 23rd, we published a notification in the Manhattan Mercury to amend the 2021 budget for six funds and to set the date for the public hearing, which is tonight. Tonight, we are having a public hearing to amend the 2021 budget for six special revenue funds. They are the fire pension KP&amp;F Fund, sales tax fund, Special Street and Highway Fund, Downtown Redevelopment TIF Fund, Special Street Maintenance Fund, and the Equipment Reserve Fund. We budgeted $1,155,000 in 2021 for the fire pension KP&amp;F Fund. We did not carry over our beginning fund balance in this fund. We had anticipated a budgeted amount of $427,500, but we were not able to carry that over due to the pandemic and the budget from 2020. We averaged about $55,000 of pay period in fire pension expenses, and are estimating that we will have expenses for 2021 at 1.35 million. We will more than likely need to use general fund revenue to make up the difference for whatever revenue shortfalls we will have. Our sales tax fund, revenues collected in the sales tax fund are transferred to the general fund, employee benefit fund, fire pension fund, and general improvement fund. To date, we have collected 70% of the budgeted amount of 5.87 million. If we continue to collect at this same rate, we anticipate that we will receive an additional $600,000 in revenue. In order to use that additional revenue, we will need to amend the budget, and so the increase is $600,000. The next two funds, the Special Street and Highway and Special Street Maintenance Funds, the projects that were earmarked in those two funds for 2020 were put on hold due to the unknown revenue impacts of the pandemic. The Special Street and Highway Fund is being amended by $2.23 million, while the Special Street Maintenance Fund is being amended by a million dollars. Both of these funds are being amended to capture the funds carried over from 2020, which will allow for those projects that were put on hold in 2020 to move forward. The Downtown Redevelopment TIF Fund, the adopted budgeted amount was $2,883,823, and we are amending to $3,172,450. The revenue sources for this fund are property taxes and sales tax revenue. We have collected 98% of the budgeted property tax revenue. To date, we have collected 77% of the budgeted sales tax revenue. If we continue to collect at this rate, we anticipate we will receive an additional $290,000, which is roughly the difference of the budgeted amounts, and in order to use that, we will need to amend the budget. All revenue received is remitted to the bond trustee to make debt payments on the TIF And then the final fund is the Equipment Reserve Fund. We adopted a budget of $96,715, and we're amending to $115,000 for a difference of $18,285. This fund was established last year to pay for 19 vehicles for the organization, and so, due to the pandemic, the placement and delivery of the orders were delayed, and that is all in terms of those six funds. Are there any questions?
So, Rena, on the Downtown Redevelopment TIF money, we'll just be paying that bond down faster than anticipated with that extra 600, or extra $300,000 or $290,000?
Yes, so, we have 10.53 million left on the bonds. We anticipate paying them off in 2026, so any additional revenue that we receive is put in the escrow, and then they can make additional payments towards the scheduled bond payments.
Is, is the 2026, is, are we ahead of, are we, are we going to be ahead of schedule by six months or a year or two on that, too, like we were on like the Star Bonds and some other things, or is that more accurately predicted and we're closer to that?
I was looking at the schedule today. I believe that we are ahead of schedule, and so, we will make that debt payment at the end of November, and then we'll get another debt service schedule, and we can provide that to you to show where we will be at in terms of the final payout.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, seeing no other questions from the Commission, are there any public comments on the city budget amendments? Okay, we're supposed to conduct a public hearing on it, so is there anyone here that wishes to, wishes to speak regarding this item can do so at this time? Okay, don't see any, so are there any other Commissioner comments on this particular item? I do want to ask one question, just so the, the, the public is clear on this. The majority of these funds were collected sales tax?
So, fire pension, they have sales tax revenue coming into them as a, as a transfer, and then some of them do have property taxes, like the Downtown Redevelopment TIF, sales tax, those funds that are receipted into that sales tax fund are transferred out to other funds like the general fund and what other, fire pension fund, employee benefit fund, and general improvement fund, and then Special Street and Highway, they get gasoline tax, and then the Special Street Maintenance is its own special sales tax.
Okay, so this is driven by, basically, the, the bottom line is increased revenue, so therefore, we can play some catch-up on things, especially like to see additional funds going into street maintenance.
The, I would say for sales tax, Special Street and Highway Downtown, and Special Street Maintenance, fire pension, we have the expenses, but we do not have the revenue coming in for that. So, we did not carry over the budgeted amount of 427,000, and then the sales tax transfer that we budgeted wasn't what we needed for that fund either.
Okay. All right.
Rena?
Yes.
If we were to continue to take in more revenue than the budget, will you come back for another budget revision? Should we anticipate that, or is this the final?
We shouldn't anticipate that for the year. This is for, these six funds are what we anticipate till the end of the year.
Okay.
So, all the other funds are fine in terms of their expenditures compared to their revenue.
And the end of the year is really close, December 31st.
Very much.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mayor, I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the 2021 city budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5 to 0.
You're awesome.
Okay, then we'll move on to the general agenda, and the first item on the general agenda is consideration of an economic development agreement for Elsie Holdings, LLC, a DBA, the prime company. And the presenters will start off with Jason Helgers, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm just going to provide a brief introduction. We typically consider economic development requests twice, so this evening is your first consideration of this request. It comes to you from Brian and Chris Elsie, who own the Prime Company. They are a firm that has been developing housing in Manhattan for quite some time, and have broadened their horizons to several states throughout the country. They are proposing to expand their headquarters here locally, invest in property just off of Vanessa Drive, and add 13 jobs over the next seven years. We worked with the Chamber on putting together a proposal for you this evening. Darren Solden's going to walk you through some slides, and then Elsie's are here as well, they can make comment, and I will follow up after that if you have any questions. But Darren will be able to walk you through the specifics of the ED prospect and the agreement. So, with that, Darren?
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Commissioners. Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development, the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for having me this evening. I am going to run through these next couple of slides here. Who is advancing? Am I advancing slides? Perfect. Yep. All right, there we go. So, first little bit of background on the, on the company and the project, and I'll, I'll cover some company history as well, but Elsie Holding and its subsidiaries, when we're referencing the Prime Company, that is one of the subsidiaries. They're a full-service real estate development company, design, construction, and property management. So, when we reference properties or projects this evening, those are ones that they have designed, built, and they currently manage. The majority of their revenues do come from outside the state of Kansas, and I'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about the state incentive package that they have, they have secured as well. This particular project expect just under $1.4 million in capital investment in this new headquarters office building, creating 13 new jobs. You can see there kind of the types of jobs here. These will be located in Manhattan and, and serve a number of functions within the company, both, both with the local operations, but also with the operations around the country. Average wage there, as you can see, $71,760, so good-paying jobs as well. This is just briefly the site, so off of Vanessa Drive, located just west of Vanessa Drive, to the north of Kimball Avenue. Company history, Elsie Brothers founded the company in 2005. Going back then, local projects included the University Terrace Apartments, which are now known as Prime Place, located over near the K-State soccer field, soccer stadium, and baseball stadium there off of college. Since then, as Jason alluded to, significant national growth began in the large complex, 1,000 units they built in Stillwater, Oklahoma in 2010, and since then, projects in Lincoln, Nebraska, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Columbus, Ohio, Los Angeles, and Denver, amongst others. Currently have plans for projects in Denver, San Francisco- Currently have plans for projects in Denver, San Francisco, San Diego, and Austin as well. So continued growth, some expansion opportunities, and, and growth opportunities that they're looking at now as, as well, and that causes the need for, for growing their team. Currently, that team has about 21 folks, and these are not FTEs, these are, these are numbers, employees, about 21 folks in Manhattan, and another 64 outside of Manhattan located at the different facilities around the country. An example, some of their work, you can see there on the left, that is a project up in Minneapolis, and on the right, there's some plans for a project out in Lakewood, Colorado, in the, in the Denver area. So talk a little bit about the process to get where we are tonight. Elsie Holdings, The Prime Company, had approached about incentives and, and talked to the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas, through the Kansas Department of Commerce, ultimately put forward an incentive package that was agreed upon, which you can see there on the top half of the slide. So going through this process, a couple of things that were vetted. One, that the company qualified for state incentives, and, and we use that as well here at the local level to, to base eligibility. In this case, really, the qualifying factors were that it's a company that has national operations, so over 50% of revenue, the majority of revenue generated outside of, outside of the state, and, and then that this is their national headquarters. So this is where their headquarters functions exist at, and the owners are, and the owners are at. So with that, they qualified for these three particular programs, Promoting Employment Across Kansas, or PEEK as it's better known as, is a retention or reimbursement of state withholding taxes on new hires over, over a period of time, seven to 10 years. HPIP, or the High Performance Incentive Program, is a Kansas income tax exemption. And so, they, based upon capital investment and, and job creation, so that's where that benefit is realized. And then finally, project sales tax exemption. That is a rider on the HPIP program, where this particular project, available a sales tax exemption on any of the materials or labor associated with, with this particular project. So that total at the state, through the State Department of Commerce, comes out to $381,485. And, and that agreement was executed between the company and the state. And so, again, they have to meet the numbers, they have to make the investment to, to realize those benefits, but that, that process is in place. At the local level, put the, the capital investment and job creation into our, into our city return on investment model, and as a qualifying entity, proposed $5,000 per new job created in Manhattan. And that is what you all are being presented with tonight, in the, in the packet that you've received. And, and again, just as a reminder, the, the local economic development funds, this would be structured as a performance-based grant. They will, the company is eligible for the funds once the job creation has occurred. And then, there's also some additional considerations in there as far as maintaining presence in the community for at least 10 years that are, that are written into the agreement as well. So I just want to wrap up then, and be happy to answer any questions with alignment with economic development strategies. I think it's important anytime we come before you that we reference back to the, our strategic goals when it comes to, to economic development in the community, those being job creation, talent attraction, retention, and entrepreneurship and innovation. And this particular project is, is creating jobs in our community, not only retaining jobs, but creating jobs. From a talent attraction standpoint, this will, this will help them grow their team. It's also important to note that they hire a significant number of K-State graduates, including having an internship program, as well as recent graduates, and, and past graduates that have gone out and worked professionally for other companies, and have then been hired by, by The Prime Company. And then finally, on the entrepreneurship and innovation front, the fact that this is a homegrown company, again, generating over, or the majority of their revenue outside the state of Kansas, but choosing to grow here in Manhattan. So with that, Jason, do you have any other things you want to cover as far as the specifics? Or I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions as it relates to the, to the economic development request. Brian Elsie is here as, as well this evening.
Good evening. My name's Brian Elsie, and thank you for hearing this with Chris. So yeah, the, so The Prime Company, I wanted to give you guys just a brief overview, and I appreciate what Darren and Jason had to say, but I think one of the thing, you know, we've been doing this for 15 years. We build apartments all over the country, and we're vertically integrated. So we design, we build, and then we manage these complexes. And one of the things as we've been, we've kind of figured out the process, we know how to build housing. But one of the big things that we've seen is that it, you know, in my role in the company, when it was just my brother and I, when we started, you know, I was doing everything, cutting the grass, doing all the books, you know, going and fixing the leaky faucets. But now, my job is primarily just going out, finding funds to build the projects, and then, two, is getting new talent to help us and to join our team. And one of the things that we've really seen is that having a great facility and having a team environment has really been, is something that we really need to improve on. And so, we hire a bunch of K-State grads, we're, come, that come to work for us, and these are skilled jobs, like architects, or MEP engineers, and structural engineers. And so, having this facility, we think is really going to help us do that, and attract new talent, as we're going out and finding, we're bringing, I just had a guy up here, he's, he's an architect that is a K-State grad. He went down and worked in Dallas for a, a big architecture company, and we found him on LinkedIn, and reached out to him about a position here, and he's, it was this afternoon, he was looking at four or five houses. So that's kind of what we've been doing, is we've been going out, finding these guys, bringing them back here to Manhattan, and having them join our team. And something that we're trying to do with our internship program is, like, we had an interior, a guy that was in the interior design program, he interned with us, and then he's at his senior year at K-State right now, finishing up the interior design program there. We've already offered him a job, so that when he's done with school, hopefully, he'll stick around with us. So again, it's having a facility and just having place, places for these guys, and having an attractive place. And I love Manhattan, I think it's a great community. So I'm a transplant from Denver, came here for school, a generational family, my parents went to K-State, and I've stuck around. So I think it's a great place, and I appreciate your consideration. I can answer any questions as well.
Just a comment, we, we hear all the time from K-State grads that they wish there were jobs here, so they could stay. And so, you're offering construction management and architects, and they have a construction science program, so yeah, you're doing all the right things. Thank you.
Yeah, send them our way. If you know of anybody looking for any of those jobs, send them our way.
Brian, is, is the piece of property basically the one from the beauty shop lending place into the north up to the corner?
Yeah.
The piece of land you're looking at?
Yeah, it's just north of the, the Prime Lending and the beauty shop, it's just across from the Hospice Center.
Okay.
I think it's got a beautiful setting. I mean, you know, Manhattan, particularly that area, I think it's a beautiful area. So I think it's a great location.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ready. I think some of the positives to this proposal is, one, it is $65,000, so it's not hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. The other piece is, I think the Department of Commerce, the Kansas Department of Commerce, has been more active in the past few years, and I appreciate Secretary Hol, Secretary David Tolan and the Commerce Department to put in some of the investment also from that side. So it's not just the city picking up as much as we can, trying to invest it from ECODEVO funds. So I think it's good that it is a stronger partnership with the state of Kansas, with the city of Manhattan, and then the private sector. And that's, that's ultimately the best relationship to have. And I think the quality of jobs you're offering is really good also. It's not $10, $12 jobs. These are skilled jobs, as you mentioned, and to have it in, in the city of Manhattan is also another asset. Not only are they looking for jobs, they're looking for quality jobs, as Commissioner Morse had mentioned. So hopefully, this is one of the incentives that works for all of us to keep our talent in our community. Yeah, and I think there's enough there where, for each job, it's $5,000, where was that? $5,000 job incentive for creating each job? And I think 13 jobs is very realistic, so it's not like a pie in the sky, 300 jobs kind of deal. So I think it's a very realistic proposal. And from what I see, it seems something that I can support. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's, you know, we haven't done a lot of economic development, you know, packages lately, but we had plenty of funds. So, you know, the funds are available, and this isn't really a huge outlay, $65,000 for, for the return. I think 13 jobs is great, and, you know, it fits, as was pointed out, you know, the jobs, the talent, the entrepreneurial thing, and, and it's really great, the state of Kansas came forward with a, with a nice package also. So I think this, this fits just perfectly with what our economic development goals are, and the idea of, you know, getting away from just relying on the military and K-State. We've got to bring in some other things, and having a, having your headquarters here is going to just fit perfectly with that. So I'm 100% for the project.
I, I think it's important just to point out that, that's one of the reasons we have, the citizens voted for the economic development sales tax, so we could use them to, as incentives for new development. And so, certainly, this part of town has been on our agenda for a long time to continue to, to build out in both commercial and residential, and so, this is a great project. I, I did say, I think that this, these are the 2012 Economic Development Funds. So that has, that was the middle of the, there are three economic development projects. So I'm glad that we can use up some of those older funds and find a way to, to...
Commissioner, those are the current funds?
The current funds?
Yep, 12 to 22.
Okay, 12 to 12, okay, thank you, sorry. I was not adding right. Thank you, Jason. Anyway, it's, it's a good use of our funds, and, and the mayor is right, we've been kind of waiting for somebody to come for a while, so, so it's something that, it's easy to support.
Okay, appreciate the comments. Is there any public comment on this particular proposal? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we authorize second consideration of Elsie Holdings LLC, doing business as The Prime Company Economic Development Application for October 19th, 2021.
I second.
Do we have a motion and a second? City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Fisher Hassel?
Yes.
Fisher Estebrock?
Yes.
Fisher Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and then we'll move on to item B, and the last item on our agenda, which is to consider Resolution 100521C, creating a speculative industrial building, industrial revenue bond IRB program.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We were here about a month ago presenting you a draft proposal of this speculative building IRB program. I'm going to go through a little bit of that background, and what we talked about, as well as the policy details and the application process, before we jump into any public comment. There was that chamber desire to establish this tax abatement program, so that we could incentivize developers who would be willing to construct facilities on a speculative basis, that would fill economic development needs in the community, specifically in areas of industrial programs, manufacturing, warehousing, those types of businesses that bring in a lot of jobs and economic development to the community. We were finding that that space isn't really readily available in the communities. Competitors are offering those spaces. The cost to retrofit existing buildings is often pretty expensive, and then we were seeing that economic development prospects were really wanting to come into a community with a facility that's already ready. They weren't looking for the expense of building new. So other communities like Wichita and Lawrence have explored these programs, and the Chamber provides you all a letter and a recommendation of a program to pursue. So we had that discussion item about a month ago, and a majority of the city commission provided feedback to staff to develop that policy resolution, so you all could consider it tonight. I'm going to just briefly go through a lot of the outlines, definitions, provisions within the policy. It's pretty straightforward from where we were last time, not much has changed, but wanted to provide you it from the perspective of the language that's within the policy. And then again, ultimately, any application to use this program is going to come back to the city commission for your consideration if you do adopt this policy. But again, we outline the definition of what that speculative industrial building would be. We do want it constructed without any pre-leasing in place, and then, there are specific intended uses for that building to meet those economic development job needs, and manufacturing, research and development, production, warehousing, distribution of goods. Again, with the goal of attracting new jobs to the city in a way that we can incentivize developers to construct these buildings to meet those ED needs, and help us in those job recruitment efforts when people are pursuing expansion or new businesses, and Manhattan's one of the cities on their list. There are some eligibility requirements within the policy, so the speculative building must be located within the city of Manhattan. Again, you can't have any pre-leasing in, in place. Does have to meet those identified intended uses that I listed before within the definition. And then there are some requirements related to construction. So once the IRB program is pursued, and it's approved by the city commission, they have within 120 days to start construction after that building permit is issued, and then 15 months to complete that project after the building permit's issued. There are some preferred policy eligibility requirements within this speculative building program. We talked about that minimum size. We do want to have a building that is developed that is going to be of the size and nature that's going to facilitate a larger economic development job recruitment. So we mirrored a lot of other city, other cities' policies with the minimum requirement of 50,000 square feet of usable space. That can include things like offices, restrooms, common areas. Again, you can see here, we use the, the preferred language. All of that is going to be put forth in the application by the developer. We're going to work with them with that application, and then developing that agreement. We didn't want to use any strict requirements in the case we had someone come in with a 49,000-square-foot building or something like that. We do have those minimum clear height and clear spans to facilitate that type of use. And then, also pursuing that preferred method of that primary or first lease within that large building would have to be a minimum of 25,000 or half in the case of a 50,000-square-foot There is also that property tax abatement schedule that can occur, and that would be outlined in that agreement that we would enter into with the developer. In those first five years, there would be a 95% property tax abatement. The following years, six through 10, it would drop down to a 50% property tax abatement, with the understanding that 50% or more of that building is leased by someone who is producing jobs in the community. In the event that they don't have a lease in place, that property tax abatement would drop down to 0%. That'd be on a year-by-year basis, though. So if in year six, they're not able to fill that building, they're not going to get that property tax abatement. However, if in year seven and beyond, they are able to secure some jobs and a lease within that building, that 50% property tax abatement could kick back in. We did talk too about that job creation, and we would negotiate that with the individual who's applying. The Chamber of Commerce recommended that one job for every 2,000 square feet within a facility. So if you had a 50,000-square-foot facility, we're looking to bring in 25 jobs within any certain lease. And then there was the idea of that recapture program, if you did not, if you had a lease in place, but you weren't meeting that job requirement. So say you only, you had a 50,000-square-foot facility, and you only were able to secure 20 jobs instead of the 25 target, you would be able to recapture some of that abatement because they weren't meeting that desired job growth that we were seeking. So that would be something too, that would be worked into the agreement on a case-by-case basis with that developer. There is the sales tax portion of this too, for that abatement, for the construction exemption on materials during that process, that would go along with the IRB. There's, there'll be an applicant... There'll be an application fee, $2,500, and then the applicant would also be required to pay the bond council fees for the development of that agreement and us working with our bond council. I do want to point out that, you know, this policy, we define this within the policy that you're considering tonight. It is separate from our IRB and tax abatement policy. So they would follow the policy that's in front of you here, and they would fill out a separate application, and we'll work to develop that application upon adoption of this, if that occurs. And then we'll have that available for any prospective developer. Again, the application is going to be filled out. We'll work with that developer to fill out that application, talk through the policy with them, and then of course, we bring that application back to you all in that agreement for your consideration anytime that occurs. So that application is going to have stipulations within it regarding those eligibility requirements, regarding the formulas for the tax abatement, and any job requirements within that. There is a requirement in that section that no relocation of an existing business in Manhattan within 10 miles could occur following five years of completion. We did talk, we have in there, the commission has the ability to waive that. The chamber did mention there could be circumstances where, as an example, you have an existing business where, you know, it's not viable for them to stay within their existing building, and there's no other building available, so this may be an opportunity for them to get in. So on those case-by-case bases too, that provision can be waived by the governing body. Another thing that can occur within the agreement is that in the event the developer sells the building, that tax abatement could follow with that sale and remain in effect during that time based on approval of the commission. So with that, I can allow public comment and then take any commissioner comments, if that's all right.
Jared, I have a few questions, and you may have answered this last time. I just want to be clear in my head how this works. So for the property tax abatement for years one through five, once it's up and going, so the first one through five, the years one through five, it's 95% tax abatement.
Yep.
And for years six through 10, if it is full at 50% capacity, then it goes to 50% property tax abatement. But if it is not at 50%, let's say it's 45%, they don't get the 50% tax abatement. Is that right?
Yep, in this case, that would be the case. You could, of course...
And then let's say...
The agreement could say otherwise. You know, we could negotiate 45% or 40% with that developer. That, of course, would come back with you. This is kind of the schedule that's outlined, that the program would pursue, the commission could pursue something otherwise. But in that example, if that was in the agreement, yeah, if you only had 30% or 45% of this space leased, then you wouldn't be getting that tax abatement for that year. Following year, if you got up to that 50% threshold, 51, 52, you would be able to get that 50% abatement.
So let's say, instead of the following year, it took them two or three, let's say it took them three years to get to 50%. Does it kick back in at that time then, that they get the 50%? How long does it last, I guess, is what I'm asking?
So in that case, say you build a 50,000 square foot building, and we enter into that agreement with the developer based on this schedule. And in year two, they do start getting a lease and bringing in jobs, and say they do lease 50% or more, they're still going to get that 95% abatement through year five.
Right.
Yep. And then year six, that's when that second schedule would kick in with the 50%.
So I'm just saying, if they don't get to 50% like till year seven?
Mm-hmm.
So how long does that gap last for them to get to 50%? And a...
It will go through that 10-year period. So the first five years, they're going to get the 95% abatement if no one's in there or if they do have it leased. In year six, if they have more than 50% or more of that building leased, they're going to get a 50% abatement. If they have less than that, they won't get an abatement at all.
Right.
And then that keeps going every year. So we'll reevaluate that every year. So in year seven, if they do get above 50, they will get that. Again, it could be the opposite where the lease falls through and then they don't have that occupied. They would then lose out on that abatement. It wouldn't be a sure thing for year six through 10.
So how long does that 50% abatement last? Is it for 10 years, 20 years? Let's say they're at 50% capacity or more.
It will last for, from years six through 10. So the total span of this abatement period would be a 10-year...
Okay, that's what I needed to know. I must have missed that somewhere.
And that would be stipulated in the agreement.
All right.
Commissioner, that's set by state statute too.
Oh, it is?
Yep. So we can only certify 10 years.
Okay, that's good to know, because I didn't know when the end was. Okay, sounds good. Thank you for answering my question.
There's no provision to renew it, right? It just ends after 10 years?
Yep, and I think based off Jason's comments, that we wouldn't be able to renew it more than that based off the state law.
Yeah, okay. Especially with the 95% abatement. How does this work with the county, with the county treasurer's office or the appraiser? Do you file a copy of the agreement with them? Or how do the notices come and go?
Yes, we do. So annually, we will certify whether or not the agreement is upheld.
All right.
And we will certify the amount of the abatement each year of those 10 years with the county.
And is that, do you certify, do you do that to the appraiser's office or to the treasurer?
Clerk's office. And then they share it with their respective departments.
All right. I was just curious how that works. Thank you.
Yeah, to follow up on that, do any of these other taxing authorities have any veto power on this?
No, they do not. Not when you issue industrial revenue bonds. Yep.
Okay, but what about the property tax abatement?
It's part of the IRB. Yep. So it's under your authority to issue IRBs and under your authority to grant an abatement.
Okay. That's curious, because that will affect the school board and, of course, the county.
Sure.
Wanted to be sure it wasn't like the TIF agreements where they had to sign off on it.
Correct.
Okay.
So this process, they are utilizing IRBs. Earlier, when I said that the IRB policy didn't apply, they're still issuing IRBs. It's just we wanted to acknowledge that we do have a separate tax abatement policy and a separate IRB policy. This one is specific to speculative buildings, so this is the policy that applies. Still utilizing IRBs, though. We didn't want to confuse, although I'm probably confusing you all right now as I talk about it, but we wanted people to focus on this policy as opposed to acknowledging that we do have another policy out there related to IRBs.
I understand that. And also, you know, because it says maybe subject to job creation, so there is some flexibility in this whole thing too, depending upon the individual building and what comes forward, right?
Yep.
So it's not poured in concrete exactly as written there, but that's generally the direction we're heading?
Yep, and I imagine we'll, when we go into it with the first one that occurs, we're probably going to be looking at that original proposal that's chamber set of one job for every 2,000 square feet, and then work from there with the developer.
Okay.
And it may be that the chamber's bringing a occupant that we want to provide incentives to based on the type of jobs they're producing and relocating from and expansion. So there could be a separate agreement with that particular company as well, even though it may not, it's involving leased space. So that's the reference to...
They could get IRBs and tax abatement and economic development.
It would just be an incentive agreement like we just did.
Okay.
So this incentive thing goes with the building owner. Those incentives go with the business that occupies the building. And so that's, there's multiple incentives, but only, they're only good if you own the building or if you own the business that goes in the building. What you're saying there that the, okay, I got it, I'll stop.
Yeah, so we'll need to work out within that agreement with the developer specifically, not the business in place, but the developer, so that that reporting occurs, so we're ensuring that the jobs are there. And then we'll go through a separate reporting process, probably with that same business in that example, for their economic development incentive.
I don't know what kind of businesses will come in. I think this is one of those things that we can have another tool in our toolbox, let's say, for economic growth, because we are competing not only within other companies and other communities in Kansas, but nationally and internationally as well. So hopefully, this will be something that will give an opportunity for other businesses or developers to consider. What I do want to be cautious of is this whole dark store stuff that's happening in front of us. To make sure any kind of policy we develop, I don't know if we can put something in there about fair market value or that they can't, you know, go to boat end, ask for, after their tenure is up, ask for different types of exemptions or reduction in property taxes. So in agreements, if we can do that at some level, that would be good, because one of the things we felt at the Marriott, when they bought the parking spaces, IRBs were very contentious because we were giving, you know, sold it for $800,000, and all of this was there. So I just want to make sure that when we discuss IRBs or incentive packages, that those same developers, Genesis, you know, has issues with property taxes. We don't want to continue to see that and reward bad behavior in any way. So I don't know what that would look like in a document, but I think we need to look into that a little bit closer. I don't think the legislators are going to be doing anything anytime soon considering to discuss dark store stuff, but I think that's something we need to try to develop a policy if we can in incentive packages. So that's my feedback.
I support what Yusha said. I don't want to be giving tax breaks to companies that come in the back door after the taxes are paid and ask for refunds for half of the amount two years and three years ago. So I'd be the second person to support that.
Any pursuit of that, we would need to obviously work with our bond counsel and attorneys and look at the state law, but then that would be worked into any agreement that came forth with you, not necessarily within this policy resolution.
I do support this because I think we need to get started on something with this.
Yeah, I think this is a good plan. I thought about this quite a bit, and we've, you know, we've talked for years here about jump-starting, getting that third leg of the stool, you know, so we can get away from just Fort Riley, K-State. And just like the project we approved here just before this one, this is one way to get it going, and we just, we really haven't had this on the table. So I've got pretty high hopes for this. And the key thing is to, you know, incentivize somebody to build the building, and then the worry about who's in there and whether they pay their taxes, that's something farther down the line. What we've got to do is get these buildings built and get those manufacturers in here, and then we can start really growing the economy in another direction. And that's something that's been talked about for 10 years, and we just haven't been able to get it jump-started. So I think this is a worthwhile investment to put this on the table and get moving with it.
I'll just echo that real quick. I think I agree with Commissioner Ready and Mayor Butler in that it's not just another, it is another tool, but it's also something that we've been kind of waiting and being slow or a little bit behind the game in getting there. And there's this idea that it's, if you build it, they will come. Well, that's just one piece of the tool, the entrepreneurship, the job creation, all the different tools in the box. This is just another thing that maybe somebody wants to come look at a building. We have a building available, and while they're here, they'll realize how many other options we have to offer as well. So I'm excited and I support it, and I agree with all the comments already said.
Didn't have the right button pushed. Are there any public comments on this particular proposal? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments and come back to the commission for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 100521-C, authorizing a speculative industrial building IRB program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Estebre?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, well, that concludes the meeting for tonight. Thank you for attending, and the meeting is adjourned.